PGA USGA rules class here in Milwaukee in late February. So we've got one, two, three, four. Okay, so Ken's so smart, he's not going to the class, he's just gonna go to the exam.
Good for you.
I'm saving $150.
Well, I'm plus, and Ken might as well, what was your score last time? It was pretty impressive, 96, very impressive.
He shot his aim.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Sorry, Kenny. How many are on the right here?
Currently 26 and it's been as high as 31.
Why did the five drop out, Bill?
You'll have to write them in.
All right.
Just after Bill punched Kenny in the face.
All right, well, let's pick up with rule one and hopefully we'll get through rule three and then we'll call it a day. So rule one outlines some of the, well, first it defines what the game is and it outlines several fundamental rules within the game. Rule 1-1 itself tells us what golf is, consists of playing the ball, a ball with a club from the tee ground into the hole by a stroke or successive strokes in accordance with the rules. And that's obviously what we're talking about these next several weeks is what in accordance with the rules means. So here's one sentence, pretty straightforward, but think how many important terms and concepts are embedded here. Talk about playing a ball from the tee to the hole, not about playing several balls, a ball from the tee ground, defined term, into the hole of the defined term, stroke or successive strokes, and then rules. So several definitions right within that one sentence. Now, rule 1-2, a big rule that has several parts to it. A player must not take an action with the intent to influence the movement of the ball in play. So let's just look at that part of it. First point, keep in mind, this is an intent based rule. There are several, if not many, rules that are not intent based, that are just action based. For example, you hit your ball out of bounds, you can't say, well, I didn't intend to hit it out of bounds, so constant slack. You know, that, that does happen. But this does, this is a case where the player's intent does matter. So now we're talking about influencing the movement of the ball. And that's an important distinction because there, there are different penalties for intentionally deflecting the ball versus accidentally deflecting the ball. So, for example, if, if I intentionally stop my ball in motion, I in stroke play will incur two penalty strokes. Whereas if I accidentally deflect my ball, let's say I hit a ball that strikes a tree, comes back and strikes me, as we'll see under rule 19-2, that would be just a single penalty stroke. So that's an important distinction. So a player must not intentionally influence the movement of a ball in play, whether his or someone else's. And, and that's for either good reasons or for bad reasons. And a player must not alter physical conditions with the intent of affecting the play of a hole. And again, underline or circle the word intent there. And that's a, at first, a tough concept to understand. So let's look at an example with decision 1-2/3 that'll make that a little easier to grasp. In that decision, a player likes to take relief from area of ground under repair. He determines his nearest point of relief in the one club length drop area. But then he notices there's a small bush located beyond that one club length dropping area. Fearing the ball could come to rest close to the bush when dropped, therefore have his swing hindered, the player intentionally breaks off and removes a part of the bush. What is the ruling? All right, well, first, the decision clarifies that rule 13-2, which protects the area in which a player is to drop a ball, does not apply. Because this, the breaking of the bush occurs beyond that one club length dropping area. However, the rule we just read, 1-2 prohibits a player from altering physical conditions with the intent of affecting the play of a hole. And that is what this player did. He removed this, broke off this tree branch to make sure, which would be a physical condition, to make sure it did not affect play of the hole, i.e. that it wouldn't hinder a swing in case his ball came to rest there. Now, in determining whether there is a penalty, does it matter if the dropped ball actually comes to rest there? No, it does not. The key is that the player altered physical conditions. He broke off this tree branch or this part of the bush for the purpose of assisting him should that possibility arise. Now, a couple of big exceptions. An action that is expressly permitted by another rule is subject to that rule, not rule 1-2. So let's say, for example, my ball lies in the fairway. And I have a big pine cone two inches behind my ball. May I remove that pine cone? Answer is yes, I may. But if you look only at rule 1-2, you might think twice. Well, if I remove that pine cone, I'm altering physical conditions with the intent of affecting play of the hole. So rule 1-2 would say, oh no, you can't do that. But on the other hand, what is rule 23 say? Rule 23 that specifically deals with loose impalement says that's okay to do. So that's an example of the first part of the exception, then action expressly permitted by another rule is subject to that rule. So in other words, rule 23 would govern and not rule 1-2 in that case. So let's look at the other part of the exception. An action expressly prohibited by another rule is subject to that other rule, not rule 1-2. An example of that would be rule 24-1, which deals with the, among other things, the removal of a movable obstruction while another ball's in motion, when that removal might influence movement of the ball in motion. And there are two different standards. That rule 1-2, as we just saw, is governed by the player's intent, whereas rule 24-1 is not governed by the player's intent. So there are different standards. So in determining, determining the ruling in such a case, if you say, pick up a bunker rake while a ball is in motion, you would look to rule 24-1 for the answer and not to rule 1-2. Penalty for breach of this rule is loss of hole in match play or two strokes in stroke play. But notice the asterisk. In the case of a serious breach, the committee may impose a penalty of disqualification. So you could have a serious breach in both match play and stroke play, but by decision, we say that in almost every case, in match play, a loss of hole penalty would be sufficient. But there is the potential. So we have a note clarifying what is meant by a serious breach. Well, a serious breach occurs if the committee considers that the action in breach of this rule allowed the player or another player to gain a significant advantage, or has placed another player other than his partner at a significant disadvantage. So for example, if I see my ball is headed, if I played my, I took relief from a lateral water hazard, I play my ball up to the green, now I see my ball heading right back to the lateral water hazard, and I stopped my ball from going in the lateral water hazard. Would that be a significant advantage? Yes, it would be, I've stopped my ball from going into a lateral water hazard. But on the, and then let's say, I see Bill's ball, his ball's coming towards the green, but I intentionally deflect it so that it will go into a lateral water hazard. Unless Bill's my partner, that would be a serious breach, that not, that would not be, would not be considered a serious breach if I seriously disadvantaged my partner. You know, it might be an awkward remainder of the round, but no penalty in that case. So then note two, which follows up saying, okay, let's say there's no serious breach, player's breach rule 1-2 regarding a ball in motion. So we know then stroke play is a two-stroke penalty, but then what? Where does the player play his next shot from? And, and then the note clarifies they'll play from where the ball came to rest. So if the ball's intentionally deflected, but there's no serious breach, you just play the ball from where it comes to rest, if it was yours. But if the movement, if the ball in question belonged to, say, a fellow competitor, then the fellow competitor would apply equity. And as we'll see under rule 19, he'll actually, with hopefully the help of the, perhaps the help of the committee, make a judgment as to where the ball likely would have gone and proceed on that basis. So that's rule 1-2, and we'll look at another decision or two under it. But it's a, it's a fundamental rule, because it gets back to playing the ball, two fundamental principles behind the rules, of playing the ball as it lies and playing the course as you find it. Now, rule 1-3, agreement to waive the rules. We touched on this earlier. Players must not agree to exclude the operation of the rule or to waive any penalty incurred. And the most important point to keep in mind with this rule is that in order to waive the rules, the players first have to know the rule. So the players agree to do something out of ignorance of the rules, while there can still be consequences and penalties for that, they are not considered to have agreed to waive the rules. So let's say, for example, Bill and I are playing together, and let's look at a match play example and then a stroke play example. And on the third, we're playing match play first. On the third hole, I hit my ball into a lateral water hazard and I say, Bill, what, what do we do now? And neither one of us has the slightest idea. And I say, well, fortunately, I've got another ball in my bag, but where, where do I put it? And I, and Bill says, I think you just drop it on the edge of the fairway, where the ball left the fairway. I said, okay, that is the ball, then we play. All right, so in match play, first question, have we agreed to waive the rules? No, no, we have not, because we simply didn't know the rules. We didn't know that that was an incorrect procedure. So we haven't agreed to waive the rules. And then, let's say, while we're walking up to the green, after I've dropped and played, Bill pulls out his rules book and is looking through it and says, John, that's not right. Can Bill then make a claim and say, John, I think you lose the hole because you played from the wrong place? No, we can't, because once we agreed to that procedure, that's it. In match play, Bill may have shot himself in the foot by doing that, but then we continue on the hole. Now, that's contrast that stroke play, same fact situation. Bill and I don't know anything about rules of golf. We agree that it makes sense to drop it at the edge of the fairway where the ball left the fairway. We drop and, I drop and play. And then, let's say, Dan, rules official, who's one hole over, sees that and doesn't get to us until after I play. What then would be the ruling? Well, first, it would be reasonable for him to ask if, to do some research to see if we'd agreed to waive the rules. And then he realizes that, you know, you know, we didn't know anything about rules, so there's no, no breach of rule 1-3. Is there any penalty on Bill for giving me incorrect information on the rules? No, there's not. But is there going to be a penalty for me for having played from the wrong place? Yes, there will. So in stroke play, we'll see that I'll get a total penalty of three strokes. One for taking relief from lateral water hazard, then two more for playing from the wrong place. Then I'll continue on assuming that it's not a serious breach of playing from the wrong place. So those are not agreements to waive the rules. What would be an agreement to waive the rules would be if I hit the ball over in lateral water hazard, Bill says, John, you know, if you decide to use the two club length relief option, you're going to be dropping in some six inch rough over there. And why don't you just drop out here on the fairway? And I say, you know, it sounds good to me, but let's do that. Then he and I have agreed to waive the rules and we would both be disqualified. And as we'll see later, there is no time limit for disqualifying players who have agreed to waive the rules. So today, if we find whether two players in a match in 1963 agreed to waive the rules, or two players in 1963 US Open agreed to waive the rules, they would be disqualified today. And we'll go through an example or two that really emphasizes the knowledge aspect of that. Rule 1-4 tells us what to do when you come across a situation that the rules and decisions don't cover. And we, you know, given the nature of golf, given how every golf course is different, very different settings, climates and conditions, we should, we should not expect that the answer to every single conceivable situation is going to be found in this book. That occasionally things will come up that this book won't have an answer to. And if that's, when that happens, the, as rule 1-4 says, the decision should be made in accordance with equity. Now, one point to keep in mind with that is that this rule is intended to cover, as the title says, points not covered by the rules. It's not intended to be applied to situations where the committee says, gee, that penalty seems too severe. You know, the rule covers it, but that result just seems too severe. That's not what the rule is intended to cover. All right, now let's look at a few decisions under rule one. Now, 1-2-0.5 mentioned the premise of this earlier. It says that while you could have a serious breach of rule 1-2 in both match play and stroke play, ordinarily in match play, the loss of hole penalty is sufficient. But, but that is possible. And then, oh wait, I'm sorry, we actually skipped over exception two to rule 1-2, which provides that an action taken for the sole purpose of caring for the course is not a breach of rule 1-2. And let's look at decision 1-2/0.7 that expands on that, because again, at first, it's hard to conjure up some examples of that off the top of your head. That the phrase sole purpose of caring for the course in the exception refers to the performance of acts that encourage an etiquette section of the rules. So we're, and it goes on to say, I give an example. While a player may not smooth the ragged edge of a hole or tap down spike marks in order to influence the movement of a ball of an opponent, fellow competitor or partner, the player may generally smooth the ragged edge of a hole or tap down spike marks as a courtesy to players in following groups or matches, or for care of the course. So there is that kind of interesting line that's drawn there between players in your own group and players in other groups. Decision 1-2/1 emphasizes the, the intent aspect of rule 1-2. An opponent or fellow competitor purposely steps on the player's line of putt with the intention of either improving it or damaging it. What's the ruling? Well, in, in either case, the opponent or fellow competitor was in breach of rule 1-2. So match play, loss of hole, stroke play, two penalty strokes. And then the decision goes on to address the situation of, okay, we know the opponent or fellow competitor is penalized, but what about the poor player? Is there anything, does he have any recourse if his line of putt was damaged? And the answer is yes, that if the line of putts damaged in equity, he may restore, the line of putt may be restored to its previous condition. And then here's the principle that we'll see in half a dozen or more decisions, especially under rule 13-2. A player is entitled to lie in line of putt he had when his ball came to rest. So if someone else, such as an opponent or fellow competitor worsens it, the player often will be allowed to restore it. See, we looked at decision 1-2/3 as an example of altering physical conditions in breach of rule 1-2. And then, you know, on to rule 1-3 and decision 1-3/0.5, which raises the question of when a breach of rule 1-3 actually incurs. While walking to the first green, A and B agree that for a ball that's out of bounds, they will drop a ball at the spot where the ball went out of bounds under penalty of one stroke, even though they know the penalty is stroke and distance. Someone overhears this conversation and advises A and B, they can't do that. Neither player has yet hit a ball out of bounds. What's the ruling? Well, you know, what does the rule say? The rule says players are not allowed to agree to exclude the operation of the rule. So therefore, the, the agreement, that is the act that triggers the disqualification penalty, even if the players never act on that agreement. So as the second paragraph of the answer says, they were in, in breach of rule 1-3 as soon as the agreement was reached during the stipulated round. Now, the last two paragraphs discuss the case where, what if the players agreed to waive the rules before their stipulated round? Well, if it's match play, they're in breach of rule 1-3 if either of them starts the round without having canceled the agreement. So on the way to the course, Bill and I say, John, there's an awful lot out of, out of bounds. Let's just treat out of bounds like a lateral water hazard. And I say, Bill, we both know that, it's not the rule, but okay. And then before we tee off, I say, Bill, remember what we talked about on the way to the course. Now, I don't feel right doing that. Let's not do that. And Bill says, yeah, you're right. In that case, no penalty, because we canceled it before one of us teed off. Now, this happens in stroke play, each player is in breach if one player who's part of the agreement starts his round without having canceled the agreement. So, so this decision's helpful. It emphasizes the knowledge aspect of agreeing to waive the rules and it emphasizes that the key, the breach is the actual agreement, regardless of whether it's actually acted on. All right, then, in, look at rule 1-4, 1-4/10, dangerous situations such as rattlesnake or bees. You know, that's a great example of what equity is intended to cover, what to do if the player hits his ball into a dangerous spot near, what is it, an alligator, near bees, rattlesnakes and so forth. And it allows the player some recourse without penalty, you know, using, you know, somewhat similar procedures to, for immovable obstruction or an abnormal ground condition. But that's a good example of the use of equity. Decision 1-4/12 is one that we won't really go through, but it's an important one to know is there. So that whenever you have a situation where a lot has gone on, it can be helpful to refer to this to see whether there should be a single penalty or whether there should be multiple penalties applied, especially in stroke play. And some of the key principles of the rule or of the decision is whether the players committed one act or whether the players committed related acts or unrelated acts, whether one rule was breached or whether two rules were breached. But it establishes six principles and then it gives one or two examples of each that are helpful to know. And again, you know, several rules go out of their way to cap penalties. For example, if you carry too many clubs in stroke play, it's going to be a maximum penalty for strokes for a round. This decision is really intended to cover other situations when you're dealing with rules that don't have self-imposed penalty caps, to know when it's appropriate to apply a single penalty and when it's appropriate to have multiple penalties. And with that in mind, decision 1-4/14 is useful as well. And stroke play, player's ball lies in a bunker and makes a practice swing touching the ground. He makes the stroke, but ball remains in the bunker. So at that point, we know he has a two-stroke penalty. Before his next stroke, he makes another practice swing, again touching the ground in the bunker. What's the penalty? Well, the message of the decision, once the player makes a stroke, that really resets the penalty clock to zero. So he had two, two penalty strokes for his first practice swing, then he made a stroke at the ball. Now the penalty clock is reset to zero, although he still has those two. And then if he does it again, he has two more penalty strokes for a total of four. All right, so any questions on rule one? Okay, all right, on to rule two. And this deals with situations that are unique to match play. And since match play was the original form of golf, that we will deal with match play first and then stroke play. Rule 2-1, match consists of one side playing against another over stipulated round. Now, I talk about all square dormi, which is a good thing, that when you're as many holes up as there are holes remaining to be played. Now, rule 2-2 is kind of a curious rule that applies to a very narrow, specific set of circumstances. A hole is halved if each side holds out in the same number of strokes, makes sense. When a player's holdout and his opponent's been left with a stroke for the half, if the player subsequently incurs a penalty, the hole is halved. So let's say, for example, that Arnold and I are playing a match against each other and that I hole out in four. And Arnold has a putt for a four. And Arnold putts, and while his ball is in motion, I intentionally deflect his ball offline. So ordinarily, as we saw under rule 1-2, I would lose the hole, right? But because of this, the second paragraph of this rule, I will, and the result will be the hole is actually halved. But again, this applies only to the specific case when one part, one player's holdout and the opponent has a stroke to time for the hole, not to win the hole. If Arnold was playing for a hat to win the hole and I intentionally deflected his ball, then I would lose the hole, then I would incur that loss of hole penalty. Now, 2-3 just tells us who wins the match. By one side leading by a number of holes greater than the number remaining to be played. So for example, Bill and I are playing and Bill is two up after the 17th hole, there's no point in our playing 18th hole. So Bill was, Bill wins the match two and one. If there's a tie, you know, in some competitions, especially team competitions, it's just a half match and each team gets half a point. But in other matches, such as, for example, the state match play, where you need a winner from each match, then the committee could require the players to continue to play and to extend the stipulated round until there is a winner.
These seven players on hole one and ten, and a match is all clear through 18 holes that finish their round on the 18th hole. We announced this in advance, but I've had other people ask. And by leaving this, I think I know the answers, but can you send them to any hole in the golf course?
Oh, all right, good question. When you have extra holes in match play, do you have to send them to number one or can you send them elsewhere? And, you know, I think, Bill, you hit the most important point, and that is the committee just needs to say so upfront. And I know there have been times, say, some USGA championships where for telepathy purposes, those extra holes actually vary during the course of match play. Where, say, in the first round of match play, all extra holes go, extra hole matches go to number one. But then starting in the quarterfinals, extra hole matches might go to number 16, if there's TV cameras are set up, something like that. All right, now rule 2-4, concession of the overall match, a hole or the next stroke. And it's important to, before we get into this, just to stop for a minute and to think about how different the two forms of play, match play and stroke play are, and why the rules governing them are so different. That, for example, in match play, if Bill and I are playing a match, really the only ones directly involved with that are Bill and I. So that's why we can have certain leeways that we couldn't in other, in stroke play. So for example, if I, if Bill has an 18-inch putt, I can concede that to him, because whether he makes it matters only to me. Whereas, though, if we were playing in stroke play, though, you know, it might be 154 other people who care whether Bill makes that 18-inch putt. And since we can't all pole them at once to ask whether he should have to putt it, Bill has to hole out in stroke play. Whereas in match play, there can be concessions. So the player may concede a match at any time prior to the start or conclusion of the match. So it could be, Bill and I are scheduled to play at nine o'clock, I wake up and my back is killing me. I could just say, I could call Bill and say, Bill, I'm sorry, I can't play today, I concede, you win. And that, that's okay. Player may concede a hole at any time prior to the start or conclusion of that hole. So if Bill and I reach a tee and I hit three tee shots out of bounds, I can just say, Bill, this is yours. I concede the hole. Or what's much more common is to have specific strokes conceded, for example, that 18-inch putt. So again, concessions, we have only in match play. Now, Now rule two dash five, doubt is to procedure disputes and claims. Well, obviously if we have a referee accompanying our match and something comes up, we'll ask the referee for ruling and we'll honor whatever he says. And but if we don't have a referee accompanying the match and if there's not a referee handy, then this rule tells us what to do. It says the players must continue the match without delay. And the committee may consider a claim made by one of the players only if it's been made in a timely manner. And we'll see what timely manner means in a minute. And if the player making claim notified the opponent that he wanted a ruling and the facts on which the claim is to be based. And often what this will mean, let's take it a case. Yeah, let's take the case where Bill and I are playing a match against each other and I hit my ball into a bare area of the fairway. And I say, geez, you know, I think this should be ground under repair. Bill says, no, it's not. It's not that that bad of a lie. So we can't agree what to do. So now I, though, know the ball, have a choice to make. I could either play the ball as it lies, knowing I might not as get as good a result as I do, but also knowing that Bill won't make a claim about that. Or I could elect to, or I could take a chance. I could say, stick to my gun, say, no, I really think the committee will support me and say this is ground under repair. And I could lift the ball and drop it away from there. Knowing though that if I do that, Bill is going to make a claim. So if I drop and play away from that and Bill then says, John, I'm making a claim. I want a ruling. I don't think you're entitled to free relief from that area. Then when we come across a member of the committee, but it could well be the head professional back in the golf shop, he would confirm whether I proceeded correctly. And if it turns out that he says, oh, I know the area you're talking about. No, that's not bad enough to demarcate this round under repair, no relief. Then what would be the result of the hole? I would lose the hole because I played from the wrong place. Where if he says, yeah, yeah, I know the spot. You're right. I meant to mark that, but I did. You do get free relief. Then we count my score and we see how that score compares to Bill to determine, determine the result of the hole. So we say that the committee should consider only a claim that's been made in a timely manner. And the next paragraph talks about what is meant by a timely manner. And that is upon discovery of circum, the circumstances that gave rise to the claim, the player must make the claim before any player plays from the next team ground or if it's the last hole before all players leave the putting green or after the players have all left the putting green before the result has been, the match has been officially announced.
Can we go back?
Yes.
There is another alternative. And that is if you're not willing, if you think you're entitled to relief, if you're not willing to take a chance, you can stay there.
Well, you can't do that because then that would be unreasonable delay. And look at the very top of the page. The players must continue the match without delay. So can't, and obviously, you know, that's what a tour player is going to do. But but that's, that's really a choice. And I was picturing a case where let's say there are the committee is the head golf professional sitting in the golf shop in a situation like that.
It's a situation where there really, where there really aren't anybody available to make reasonable decisions.
Exactly.
John has a 76 day date and that's true.
Well, you know, Dan, Dan makes a very good point saying, how does that square with rule six dash eight A? Which basically says, well, a player may discontinue play to seek a ruling from the committee.
Undoubtful or disputed point.
Undoubtful or disputed point.
Isn't that what Ken said?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Yeah. So, so is there a conflict between rule two dash five and rule six dash eight A? And I think the short answer is that yes, there is.
Moving right along.
And but, but I, but what's interesting with that in, and I don't want to confuse people because frankly, I, I find the matter confusing is when you look at six dash eight, it even refers to rule two dash five. So six dash eight says, players must not discontinue play unless they're seeking a decision from the committee on doubtful or disputed point. See rule two dash five, which says you can't discontinue play to seek a decision from the committee on doubtful or disputed point. So, you know, where, where that all goes, I don't know. I, what I, what I tend to think is that since rule two dash five is more specific regarding the match play that you say rule two dash five governs match play. And that rule six dash eight is kind of an interesting curiosity. Well, but Bill, because the other thing that's so interesting is that rule two dash five goes out of the way to say, well, you can't unfree, you can't delay. And undue delay is rule six dash seven. And, you know, and so it's a graduation. First you have undue delay and then you have discontinuance of play. But then six dash eight flat out says, well, you can discontinue play to seek a decision from the committee. And I have never really understood that, Dan. So sorry to let you down, but, but you've definitely identified a, I think, a little conflict there. Well. Yeah, it's, 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 it's an, it's an odd combination of those two rules. All right. So now we talk about when a claim that can be considered, what's meant by timing manner. And what it all hinges upon is when, when the player making the claim discovered the facts, when he learned of the facts. So let's say, for example, that Bill and I are playing a match against each other. And on the third hole, Bill, my ball's in a bunker and there's a pine cone in the bunker. And Bill sees me remove the pine cone from the bunker. So then when, what, when can Bill make a claim? Up until we tee off, one of us tees number four. Now, new set of facts, third hole, my ball's in the bunker, I remove a pine cone, but Bill didn't see me do it. We play out the third hole, we're walking down number four after we've teed off number four. And I remarked to Bill, said, wow, you know, it was really strange that, you know, it had a pine cone back there and there's not a pine tree on the golf course. I wonder where it came from. And he said, wow, was it in your way? And I said, no, and I just tossed it aside and it was fine. Then at that point, could Bill make a claim? And it, and it, what's the deadline for Bill making that claim? Wait, when we, when we tee off number five? So now let's say Bill and I finish our match and we think that I won three and two. So we're walking in from the 16th green and I tell him about what happened on number three. About removing that pine cone and he wasn't, he didn't know I'd done that. Then what's the deadline for making a claim at that point? You know, before the results officially announced there. So those are the deadlines and it, and it all hinges as to when Bill becomes aware of the facts of the situation. Then in order for him to make it in those latter two situations, walking down the fourth hole and then walking in from the 16th green, two criteria must be met for him to make a late claim, you know, i.e. after we teed off on number four. Now as first, that based, that the claim is based on facts previously unknown to him. I that he did not know that before we teed off number four, the fact that I removed the pine cone. And secondly, that I had given him wrong information. And we'll see under rule nine, that if I incur a penalty, I have to tell Bill of that penalty. Even, even if I'm ignorant, even if I don't know that I'd committed it, that I'd incurred a penalty. So in this case, I'd incurred a penalty since I removed that pine cone from the bunker. And by not informing Bill of that penalty, I am considered to have given wrong information. So both of those criteria need to be met in order for Bill to make a claim after we tee off number four. And then once the result of the match has been officially announced, a claim may be considered only if those two criteria are met and the opponent knew he was giving wrong information. So in other words, that I knew for well that I'd incurred a penalty. In fact, I probably knew before I removed the pine cone that I couldn't remove in the first place and I intentionally did not tell Bill of that. All right. So let's look at some decisions under rule two. A decision two slash three is a useful one to know. In a match, A requests B to lift B's ball that's on A's line of play. B refuses. What's the ruling? Well, B loses the hole for failing to comply with A's request to lift this ball under rule 22. And this is interesting because in stroke play, under rule three dash four, there's a provision that if a player fails to act or, let's see, what exactly does the rule say? If a player refuses to comply with a rule affecting the results of another player, he is disqualified. But there is no companion rule for match play. So instead the thing, the penalty for that is barrier in this decision that, that if that happened, which is a very rare circumstance, the penalty match play would be loss of hole. Then let's look at decision two dash four slash six, putting out after a concession. You know, which happens a lot, that if Bill concedes my putt, I might go ahead and putt, you know, when it, you know, is that okay? Is that sometimes not okay? Rule two dash four does not cover the question of whether a player may putt out after his next stroke's been conceded. Player incurs no penalty for holding out. However, if the act would be of assistance to a partner in a four ball match, then the partner is disqualified from the hole. So that can be some strategy in four ball play where in four ball match play where you need to be on your toes, that say, if Bill and I are playing Arnold and Dan and I am, I lie seven on the green, but on a line similar to Bill's and Bill lies three, they might want to concede my putt because one, my score won't matter for the hole and two, to prevent me from showing Bill the line of my putt. And let's see. Under two dash five, you know, let's look at a couple of examples, two dash five slash five point five. On completion of the 14th hole in a match between A and A wins five and four, the players continued the round. They just played back into the clubhouse. And they discover that A, the person who they thought had won the match, has 15 clubs in his bag. So this is after they left the last putting green, but before the result has been officially announced. B reports the facts to the committee and asks for a ruling. Is the claim valid? Yes, although the players left the putting green of the last hole, B's claim is based on facts previously unknown to him and he is deemed to have been given wrong information by A because A had incurred a penalty by carrying a 15 clubs and failed to inform his opponent. Players must return to the 15th hole and resume the match. And as we'll see next week, the penalty for carrying too many clubs in match play is not just a straight loss of whole penalty. It's actually an adjustment to the state of the match. So if he had carried 15 clubs for, say, since the beginning of the match, he would have the maximum of two holes deducted. Instead of being five up with four to play, he'd be three up with four holes to play. All right. The next decision's also a good one to know, two dash five slash six. In a match between A and B, A is one up after 18. However, both A and B believe the match is all square. So they play extra holes and of course B wins at the 20th hole. Then they realize the error. What's the ruling? Well, since A did not make a claim before either player played from the 19th hole, the match must be considered all square, thus B was the winner. And there are several decisions in here that touch on the point that if players in ignorance in match play, with emphasis on match play, agree to do something, that whatever they agree to do, the result of that stands. So in this case, A has himself to blame for not having been, been aware of the status of the match. That did happen in match play?
And the other day it wouldn't.
And let's see. And then that's really it for, for two dash five in terms of the ones I wanted to single out. Any questions on rule two? All right. All right. Let's go on to rule three, dealing with stroke play. Rule three dash one, general. Stroke play competition consists of competitors completing each hole and returning a scorecard on which there's a gross score for each hole. The one who plays the round or rounds in the fewer strokes is the winner. Three dash two, the failure to hold out, well, we saw under rule two dash four, that there can be concessions in match play. Stroke play can't have that. So therefore in stroke play, players are required to hold out. And as this rule provides, if a competitor fails to hold out at any hole and does not correct a mistake before playing from the next tee or if it's the last hole before leaving the green, he is disqualified. So we'll see five situations in the rules where a player in stroke play must correct a mistake in a timely manner or be disqualified. And this is the first of those. And now rule three dash three, which is the stroke play companion to rule two dash five in match play. This tells us what a player may do in stroke play if he's unsure what he's required to do or what he is permitted to do. And we'll see it's a different procedure. And this has been revised and improved for this year, that tightened, changes, tightened some gaps and make, make it much more comprehensive. In stroke play only, if a competitor is doubtful of his rights, he may, without penalty, play two balls. To proceed under this rule, he must decide to play two balls. So he doesn't necessarily have to announce he's going to play two balls, but he, he needs to decide to play two balls after the doubtful situation has arisen and before taking further action. For example, the player can't just play the original ball and says, oh, you know what? I probably was entitled to relief. I'm going to play a second ball. Can't do that. So he should announce to his marker or fellow competitor. It's not a requirement, but there can be consequences if he does not make this announcement. And that's why it uses should rather than must. So he should say he intends to play two balls and with which ball he wishes to count if the rules permit the procedure used for that ball. Now, the most, you know, a, a common application of this rule is the match play example where a player's ball is in a bad lie he thinks should be ground under repair. So he wants to play two balls. Some people will say, wait a minute, why do the rules require him to specify with which ball he'd like to score? Isn't it obvious? Well, in that particular case, you know, yes, it might be, but there are other situations where a player plays a second ball just to protect himself, not because he wants to score with it. For example, let's say a player hits his tee shot and comes to rest near a boundary. But he can't tell if he's in bounds or out of bounds. So he says, I'm going to play two balls. I'm going to play the original ball as it lies. Then I'm going to go back to the tee and play a second ball under stroke and distance. But I want to score naturally with the original ball. So he's playing the second ball just to protect himself in case he can't score with the original ball. So that is why, so that the committee does not have to read the player's mind, why the player has to sit, say, with which ball he wants to score. And if he plays two balls, he must report the facts to the committee before returning the scorecard. If he doesn't, he is disqualified. So even if he thinks he scored the same with each ball, even if he thinks, look, I scored a five and a five. It's obvious my score for the hole is a five. I don't need to bother the committee. Well, this requirement is there really to help protect the players because the player might think he scored five and five, but in fact, he may have scored six and seven. And only by walking through the situation with the committee, will the committee be able to determine what the player's actual score for the hole is and therefore ensure. will the committee be able to determine what the player's actual score for the hole is, and therefore ensure that the player returns a correct scorecard. Now, if the competitor takes further action before deciding to play two balls, he has not proceeded under this rule, and the score with the original ball counts no matter what. You know, probably the most famous example of this, depending as to who you listen to, was the nineteen fifty-eight Masters. With Arnold Palmer and Ken Venturi together in the final round. Twelfth hole, Palmer hits his ball over the green, the ball embeds in some wet ground. And they, the committee had adopted local rule for a ball embedded anywhere through the green, granting relief. And Ken Venturi's version of the facts is that Palmer gets over there, asks for a ruling, and the rules official denies him relief, which was a wrong ruling. But then Palmer fusses about it, but then he eventually plays the embedded ball and makes a five, a double bogey. Then he's walking off the green, he still fusses, says, you know, I know I'm entitled to relief. So then he drops and plays a second ball, and he scores three with that second ball. Now, under that set of facts and under today's rule, what would his score for the hole be? Now, Palmer's version is different, that after he did this, that after he denied, was denied relief, he said he wanted to play two balls, and he simultaneously played two balls, and then a hole or two later, Bob Jones and Clifford Roberts came up and told him that his score for the hole was three, and he went on to win his first Masters. Which is nice, but that, so a key decision is that if you take some other action and then, before invoking this rule, then you have to score with that original ball no matter what. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He followed the rule because it didn't say you had to make that decision before you did your next shot. Yeah, well, it's an interesting point, Jim, because I remember once being contacted by some, by a golf writer researching article on that, back when I was at the USGA, and I went and retrieved the nineteen fifty-eight rules book. And it's interesting, whenever you go back and look at old rules books, it's really mind-boggling, because you would really then see the progress that had been made since then, that you'd find the rule eventually. You'd read it. And you're like, I don't know how you'd apply it. It was strange, and I can't remember, but as I recall, my impression, and I could be wrong, was that you could read it either way, almost. It was pretty vague. So that could, what you say could, well. But, but, but actually, one, one, one thing I'll mention, one thing. Well, one thing I'll mention that's interesting is, for those of you who are, you know, real that are real serious students or just curious, whenever something like that comes up, what you do is on the website for USGA's museum, you can actually go there and look online, page by page PDF of any old rules book. You know, which is a tremendous resource. It's really interesting to do that. It's it's interesting to see how, how far the rules have come since then. Alright, so now, the player has played two balls, and he reports to the committee, and now the committee needs to decide what the player's score for the hole is. And section B will tell the committee how to make that determination. If before taking further action, the competitor did announce which ball he wishes to count and provided the rules permit that procedure, the score of that ball counts. So in the bear area in the fairway example, if the committee says, yes, that is ground under repair, and yes, the rules allow you to drop and play where you played from, and the player had said he wanted to score with that dropped ball, then the player will score with that dropped ball. If the rules do not permit the procedure used for the selected ball, the score with the other ball counts provided the rules permit the procedure used for that ball. So if the though were to say, no, that's not ground under repair, then they look at to the original ball played from the bear area, and they have to say, okay, do the rules allow him to play from this bear area? And if the answer is yes, then he scores with that ball, and the answer would be yes. Now, so that's a straightforward situation, which hopefully will come with a good majority of cases. On the other, now let's look at the second scenario. If before taking further action, the player failed to announce which ball he wishes to count, the score with the original ball counts provided, provided, underline that, the rules permit the procedure used for that ball. Otherwise, meaning the rules don't permit the procedure for the original ball, the score of the other ball counts, provided the rules permit the procedure used for that ball. So let's put that in context of an example. Let's say I hit my ball into a decorative flower bed, and I can't find my local rule sheet, so I can't, I don't know if I am if I am prohibited from playing from there. So if like, if it's decorative flower beds or ground under repair from which play is prohibited. So I tell Bill, my fellow competitor, that I'm going to play two balls. And I don't say with which ball I want to score. If I just say, Bill, I'm going to play two balls. I'm going to play this ball from the flower bed, and I'm going to drop and play a ball outside. So it's okay. So then we get in, report to the committee, and the committee says, yeah, so then, and they say, so which ball do you say you want to score with? I say, I didn't say, I didn't say. So they roll their eyes, and what's the first ball? What will be the default position? Look at the original ball. So they'll look at my original ball, which is the ball played from the decorative flower bed. Then they have to ask, okay, do the rules permit that procedure? Then the answer is no, because they're saying that ground under repair from which play is prohibited. So then they say, okay, the rules didn't allow that. Do the rules allow the procedure for the second ball? And the answer is yes, the rules allowed me to take relief and take relief where I did so. So then I would score with that second ball, even though I didn't announce all. So I use that just as an example, so we all keep in mind that even if you don't say you want to score with that second ball, sometimes you're assigned to score with it. Just something to keep in mind. And then that was added for this year. It was helpful, because previously this information had been contained only in a decision. Now, you couldn't get these results from the rule itself, but now it's in a rule which is a better situation. If the rules do not permit the procedure, the score, so if neither ball is played in accordance with the rules, the score with the original ball counts unless the commit, player committed a serious breach with that ball by playing from the wrong place. If the competitor commits a serious breach in the play of one ball, the score with the other ball counts, despite the fact the rules don't permit that procedure. But if the competitor completely messes up and commits a serious breach with both balls, then we can't help the player. He's going to be disqualified. And really, this, this section shows that in general, this is a very generous rule, that it tries to keep the player playing and saying, look, as long as you did at least one of the balls correctly, played one of the balls correctly, or one ball was less bad than the other, you're going to be able to continue to play with that. And then note one, which is new for this year and is helpful, because it clarifies what is meant by the phrase, the procedure used for a ball. Means that after rule three dash three is invoked, either the original ball is played from where it had come to rest and play is permitted from that location, or B, the rules permit the procedure adopted for the ball, and the ball is put into play in the proper, in the proper manner and in the correct place as provided by the rules. So let's say we go back to the example of the bear area in the fairway, where I say that I'm going to play two balls, and I want to score with the second ball, then I'm going to drop under the ground under repair rule. So let's say I, I drop the ball, the second ball, in a spot that if it is ground under repair, would satisfy the ground under repair rule. But before I play the ball, I kick it. And we'll see later under rule eighteen dash two, that means I incur a penalty stroke and have to replace the ball. And now I replace the ball and I report the facts to the committee, and the committee says, yes, that is ground under repair. Then how will the committee rule for my score for that hole? They'll say, I'm going to score with the second ball, and I am going to have to add a penalty stroke under rule eighteen. In other words, the penalty stroke I incurred under rule eighteen dash two does not factor into the committee's determination as to whether the rules permitted the procedure I used for that ball. That has a narrow meaning. If I'm dropping away, means was the ball put into play in the proper manner and in the correct place? And the answer is yes, for that, then that penalty, if the committee says I scored that ball, stays with the score for that ball. Okay. Well, then what, if I try, if I drop the ball in an improper manner, say waist high, but in the correct place, then that would be an example of the rules not permitting the procedure used for that ball. So you have to get the manner and the place correct. Yeah, then, then I would score with the original ball. Uh.
Why wouldn't just the one stroke penalty?
Well, let's think about Dan's question, or, so if I drop the ball in the proper manner and in the correct place, but then I don't, and I say it rolls three club links, then I don't re-drop the ball as required by rule twenty dash two C, would that mean the rules did not permit that procedure? I would think so. I would think that that would mean I would not score with that ball then. That that ball was not put into play properly. Yeah, it's a procedural rare error that's directly, that's part of the specific process. So I'm sorry, Bill, what was your other question?
Why wouldn't just the one stroke penalty under rule twenty dash two A to drop me?
Uh, well, I, why wouldn't just, why wouldn't I just add one stroke penalty under twenty dash two A in your example of dropping in improper manner? As much as possible, this rule tries not to penalize players. So by saying, no, that was not put in, the rules didn't permit that procedure, so you can score with the other ball, which did not have a penalty with it. So it's a generous rule.
Let me just ask, you're on a, you're on a cart path, and you didn't take relief, but you're confused and you don't know what you can. So you get it off the cart path, and you didn't announce which ball you played down in that two, and then you took the proper drop, and you get that ball. And which ball would you score with? You both, you play them both according to the rules. I mean, you can get a ball on the cart path anytime you want.
Alright, so Tim, your question is, my ball's on a cart path, and I just is basically say, where I say nothing, or where I say I'm going to play two balls, but I don't say with which ball I want to score. So I play the ball off the cart path, then I drop and play another ball under rule twenty-four, and I do report to the committee, and the committee says, yes, you are entitled to relief. And which ball do you say you want to score with? And then I say, I didn't say. So then where they will look first, the default position is to look at the original ball. Say, okay, do the rules allow that procedure? The answer is yes, they allow you to play on the path, so I score with the ball and lay it off the path. Yeah, so that's how, that's different from that flower bed example, because the rules didn't permit me to play from the flower bed. So, yeah. Alright, so note, note one is a useful addition for this year. Note two, clarify something that before was embedded in the text of the rule. If the score with the original ball is to count for the original ball, was not one of the balls being played. For example, let's say the player hit his tee shot into a water hazard, and he wasn't sure where to take relief, so he played two substitute balls from two different locations. The first ball put into play is deemed to be the original ball. Rule three dash four, we mentioned earlier, then in stroke play, very different result than in match play. If a competitor in stroke play refuses to comply with the rule affecting the rights of another competitor, he is disqualified. Then the general penalty rule three dash five states the penalty for breach of rule in stroke play is two strokes, except when otherwise provided. And that's there just as a little bit of insurance. So if you reach a case where perhaps you have a local rule that doesn't have a penalty statement, or you have an actual rule of golf that doesn't have a penalty statement, such as seventeen dash four does not have a penalty statement, that if a player breaches that rule, then you know this is the penalty that he would incur. Alright, we'll look at a few decisions. Decision three dash three slash six point five is, I think, an important one to know. Because in stroke play, a competitor's ball, it's a little similar to Tim's question. Comes to rest on an artificially surfaced road, which had not been declared an integral part of the course. Without announcing his decision to invoke rule three dash three, or the ball with which he could score, the rules permitted, the competitor drops and plays a second ball in accordance with rule twenty-four dash two. The competitor then played the original ball as it lay, and played the whole of both balls, scoring four and five. He returns the scorecard to the committee, and he failed to report the facts to the committee. Well, yeah, he returns the score without reporting the facts to the committee. What's the ruling? And the first sentence of the answer is a useful sentence to keep in mind. Although the competitor did not announce his decision to invoke rule three dash three, it is clear from the facts that he intended to invoke such rule. So in other words, even though he didn't say I'm going to play two balls, he is still considered to be under the umbrella of rule three dash three, which means, among other things, he has to report the facts to the committee before returning the scorecard, so he's disqualified. But, so that's, there are some people who might mistakenly believe that if you don't say you're going to play two balls, then that's it, you're not under three dash three, and that's very different, and that is not the case. Alright, well, that is, that was really the one decision under three dash three that I think is helpful, that really says something that isn't explicitly stated in the rule itself. Any questions on rule three? Alright, let's see, if not, I'm sorry, we should go under four. Yeah, what the heck, we've got thirty minutes. Let's at least get through four. We say that that's okay with everybody? They made one, oh, with that decision, four dash four C slash one? Oh, we'll talk about that, Ken. That's interesting. I know you have not been a fan of that decision, so. And in fact, very few people have been. Alright, rule four, dealing with clubs. Rule four dash one, provides that the player's clubs must conform with this rule and the provisions, specifications in appendix two. Notice it doesn't say the clubs the player's player uses. This is just, any club the player carries needs to conform to the rules. A note that the committee may require players to use a club head on the list of conforming driver heads. And the reason for that is those are all clubs that have been tested, and they know to conform. So because otherwise, if a player brings a driver head to the starter and says, you know, does this club conform? You know, it's basically impossible for the starter to be able to say then and there whether it does, if it's not on that list. Where an alteration, a club that conforms when new is deemed to conform after wear through normal use in any part of a club that's been purposely altered as regarded as new, and in its altered state must conform with the rules. Now, one point to keep in mind, this rule four dash one B talks about wear, but then we'll see under four dash three B talks about damage, and it's helpful to be aware of the distinction between the two. Between wear and damage and the player has different rights. And I know one example that the USGA's test center staff has used to help explain the distinction between the two concepts is that where is the gradual erosion of material over time? So for example, that's what happens to your car tires over time. They get thinner and thinner and thinner. Uh, so that'd be wear, but damage is when say you actually strike something that punctures the tire. Like a nail or something, that that would be damaged, but it's just gradual erosion over time would be wear. And you'll see that the two are treated differently. So rule four dash one B, that provision is what is what allows players, for example, to use sand wedge, a sand wedge that they've hit hundreds and hundreds of bunker shots with over time and that's has widened the grooves on that wedge, that because it can form when new and now it can form, does not conform because of wear. Uh, it's deemed still to conform. Rule four dash two, playing characteristics. Uh, A, during the round, the playing characteristics of a club must not be purposely changed by adjustment or other means. So for example, you can't take out the wrench for your driver and change the weight or change the loft with that. Uh, you can't apply lead tape to a club during the round. Obviously fine to do all that between rounds, just not during the round. Uh, foreign material must not be applied to the club face for the purpose of influencing the movement of the ball. So you couldn't, for example, apply, um, you know, Vaseline to the club face in hopes of getting a flyer or something like that. Then we come across an interesting and fairly involved penalty statement that applies to both rule four dash one and four dash two. And it's broken into two sections. First is what if the player, uh, carries a club that was in breach of this rule? So it could mean, for example, that the player started this round with a club in his bag that can, that did not conform to the rules, but he hasn't yet used it. Or it could be that a player has intentionally changed the playing characteristics of a club during the round, but has not yet actually made a stroke with that club. All right. One, if in match play, yeah, the conclusion of the hole which the breach is discovered, the state of the match is adjusted by deducting one hole of each hole which a breach occurred, maximum deduction of two holes. So let's say I start with a club in my bag whose shaft is bent, rendering it non-conforming. And I pull out the club to use it on the sixth hole and that's when I realize that it has a bent shaft. I haven't used it before. And I tell Dan, I say, Dan, look at this. Then in match play, what will happen? Then we'll play out, but I, and I don't use it. We play out the sixth hole. And then we're going to adjust the state of the match by, in this case, the maximum of two holes. So if after six holes, Dan is two up, then we adjust the match by two holes from my breach of rule four dash one. Then Dan is now going to be four up after six holes. Now, this happens in stroke play, it'd be a penalty of two strokes for each hole with a maximum penalty of four strokes. So if on the sixth hole in stroke play, I realized I started around with a non-conforming club, but I haven't used it yet. I would add two penalty strokes to my score for the first hole and two penalty strokes to my score for the second hole. Uh, and both, both match play and stroke play, if a breach is discovered between the play of holes, it is deemed to have been discovered during play of the next hole and the penalty is applied accordingly. And that's important where, let's say in stroke play, on walking from the first hole to the second hole, I realize I have a sand wedge that has a non-conforming grip on it, but I haven't yet used it. That then am I going to get a two-stroke penalty or a four-stroke penalty? In this case, it'd be a four-stroke penalty since the penalty is deemed to have been discovered during play of the second hole. So I get the maximum penalty in that case. Then in either form of play, match play or stroke play, once I realize I've been carrying this non-conforming club, I must declare that out of play immediately and may not use it for the rest of the round. So that long penalty statement involves the case where I carried a club that wasn't, that was in breach of the rules, but I didn't yet use it. Now what happens if I actually made a stroke with the club? Say I made a stroke with a non-conforming club or I changed the playing characteristics intentionally and then made a stroke with it. Then I'm disqualified, period. Much shorter penalty statement, the second one. All right. Now on to rule four dash three, damaged clubs. And talking about the player's options as to what he may do with a damaged club. So if during the round, the club is damaged, remember this means damaging wear, in the normal course of play, the player has some options. And let's look at decision four dash three slash one, which clarifies what is meant by normal course of play. Uh, and the key is the first answer, the first sentence of the answer. The term normal course of play is intended to cover all reasonable acts, but specifically excludes cases of abuse. So removing or replacing a club in the bag, that's considered normal course of play. Uh, leaning on a club is normal course of play. Accidentally dropping a club is normal course of play. Examples of acts that are not in the normal course of play include the following. Throwing a club for any reason. Uh, slamming a club or intentionally striking something such as the ground or a tree. And why is all this important? Because if the damage occurred during the normal course of play, the player has several options. If the damage occurs other than a normal course of play, then we'll see in section B, then most cases, the player is not going to be able to use that club for the remainder of the round. But if the damage occurred during the normal course of play, the player may use the club in the damage state for the remainder of the round. And that's even if, for example, the club no longer conforms, because what if the shaft is bent? And it no longer conforms. That is okay. Well, one thing to keep in mind, I've heard a couple of versions of, uh, of this, uh, similar set of facts. That it emphasizes the fact that in stroke play, a playoff is a new stipulated round. Let's say you have an eighteen-hole qualifier, uh, for something. And a player damages a club, say while hitting his ball from near a tree and he bends the shaft of the club. So the club no longer conforms. We know that for the remainder of that round, he can use that club. But then let's say he finishes the round, shoots seventy-one, he's going to be in a playoff. So now that hole by hole playoff is a new stipulated round. So he tees off in the playoff. You know, of course, what has he done? He's kept that club in his bag. He hasn't thought twice about it. Then he realizes during the playoff, he has this in his bag, but he hasn't made a stroke with it in the playoff. So what would be the penalty then? It'd be two penalty strokes for that playoff hole for carrying, but not using a non-conforming club. So the player may use the club for the remainder of that round. And without unduly delaying play, he may repair it. And then as a third option, only if the club is so damaged that it's unfit for play. Let's look at the note below. What is meant by unfit for play? If the club is substantially damaged, so the shaft is dented, significantly bent or breaks, the club head's loose or detached or significantly deformed, or the grip is loose. So if it's damaged so much that it's unfit for play, then the player may actually replace that club, uh, so with any club. So if he say, uh, broke his five iron, broke the shaft in two when hitting a shot from against a tree, then he could replace that five iron with another putter if he wanted. He doesn't have to replace it with a five iron. All right. Now let's look at, uh, section B. Now it tells us what, what the player may do or may not do if the damage occurred other than in the normal course of play. So if the damage occurred, uh, for example, by hitting a tree in anger. And if the damage rendered the club non-conforming, for example, the shaft was bent or changes playing characteristics, for example, it uh, changed the lie or loft of the club. The club must not subsequently be used or replaced during the round. So there's no penalty just for doing this, for having rendered it non-conforming, for having changed its playing characteristics other than in the normal course of play, but the player may not uh, use that. You know, and we'll see a decision with an example of that later. Uh, four dash three C, damage prior to the round uh, may be repaired during the round, provided the playing characteristics are not changed and play is not unduly delayed. And this is a, uh, hardly ever, ever comes up. Uh, the most common example of this, which has really become outdated is when say the whipping on a old persimmon wood would be, would become loose and a player could rewrap it and tape it during the round and that would be okay. Otherwise it has an extremely limited application. All right. Rule four dash four, which probably sees the most penalties under, uh, this rule. It's the maximum fourteen club, uh, rule. Uh, section A. The player must not start the round with more than fourteen clubs and he's limited, limited to those. Except if he starts with fewer than fourteen, he can add any number as long as he doesn't exceed fourteen. Uh, but if he does so, the addition uh, must not unduly delay play and the player must not add or borrow any club selected for play by any other person playing on the course or by assembling components carried by or for him during the round. So these days, you know, it's common to create club fittings to see all sorts of shafts and heads that can be snapped together, that a player can't just carry ten shafts and uh, ten heads with him, knowing that he can make, snap together any sort of configuration during the round. Because doing so would really be a way to circumvent the fourteen club limit. Uh, partners may share clubs, provided that between the two of them, they don't have more than fourteen clubs. So that's really the type of situation where, uh, let's say if I fly out to California to play in Bill's member guest, but, uh, my clubs don't make it, airline loses my clubs, then I can just play out of Bill's bag. In effect, it'd be the most common application of that. So penalty for breach of these two sections, regardless of number of excess clubs carried. So whether it's fifteen or eighteen clubs, uh, the penalty will be the same. In match play, it'll be somewhat similar to what we saw earlier with rule four dash one and four dash two. At the conclusion of the hole which the breach is discovered, the state of the match is adjusted by deducting one hole of each hole which a breach occurred. Maximum deduction per round of two strokes. And these adjustment penalties are, are interesting. We'll look at an example of that. That it's different from the loss of hole penalty to which we're accustomed in match play. And it does, uh, cause us, whenever we come across it, to have to stop and slow down and walk through things. And it's interesting, one reason for this penalty, uh, statement of adjusting the state of the match is that it really ensures that the player is penalized. So let's say, for example, uh, that if Bill and I were playing a match and on the fourth hole, I realized I started around with fifteen clubs. That if the penalty will loss a hole, which it's not, but if it were, and I had lost holes one and two, essentially I'm not going to be penalized, am I? Because I already lost those holes. But by having the penalty be an adjustment of the state of the match, that ensures that there is going to be a penalty. So even if I lost those holes, I'm still going to be worse off uh, than I had been. So if I had been two down after four, now I'm going to be four down after four. Stroke play, uh, the penalty is two strokes for each hole which a breach occurred, maximum penalty per round of four strokes. With emphasis that the two strokes go at each of the first two holes at which any breach occurred. So with that in mind, let's say, uh, this summer during the state amateur. Uh, first two rounds, groups are starting on one and ten. The player starts on the tenth tee and then he realizes on the fifteenth hole that he started the round with fifteen clubs. So where, what would be his penalty and where would those penalty strokes be applied on his scorecard? That's right. So it'd be the first, his first two holes, which were holes ten and eleven. So he had two penalty strokes, number ten and two penalty strokes to number eleven. Uh, match player stroke play, if a breach is discovered between the play of two holes, it's deemed to have been discovered during play of the hole just completed. So that's different than what we saw under four dash one and four dash two. So that's a little kinder. So for example, if walking from the first green to the second tee, I count my clubs and I say, whoa, I've got fifteen, I'm only going to be penalized for the, at the first hole, not at the second hole. Whereas we saw that was a different result if I realized going from one to two, that I had a non-conforming club.
With regards to that, four dash one and two, uh, status of the match penalties for caddies and other local rules. Is there kind of a rule of thumb as to how to remember as to how to apply with the next ball?
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, and Bill's question is uh, sometimes with these penalties, adjustment, state of match penalties and maximum penalties, when you discover a breach between holes, sometimes the penalty applies just to the hole just completed. Sometimes it applies to that hole plus the next hole. And is there a simple rule of thumb? And as Phil said, unfortunately, there's not. That I, an important thing to know is just that, that there is a penalty and you just need to, uh, need to look it up.
Yeah, I think there is a simple rule of thumb.
Okay.
Always, uh, to the next hole, except for the three exceptions.
Four dash three, normal course of play, four dash four and four dash four, four B.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess it depends, I guess it depends on your definition of rule of thumb. And if, and I guess some people would say that, well, a rule of thumb shouldn't have three exceptions, but that by, but you know, so, so, you know, when you learn the rules, as is, you know, most things in life, you just have to learn what method works for you. And, you know, Dan thinks that's very straightforward, very simple and thumb, others might not. And you need to know what, what works for you. All right. So now we know a player's been a breach of the rule, we've applied the penalty. So what happens now? Under four dash four C, any club, uh, carried or used in breach of this rule must be declared out of play immediately upon discovery and the player must not use that club for the remainder of the round. If he does so, he is disqualified. Right now, let's look at a few, uh, decisions. Uh, decision four dash three slash two. Under rule four dash three A, we saw that for clubs damaged in the normal course of play, one of the player's options is to repair it. And this decision clarifies what is meant by repair. As the answer states, repair means to restore the club as nearly as possible to its condition prior to the incident that caused the damage. And then this was an interesting twist that was added a couple of years ago. In doing so, the player is limited to the grip, shaft and club head used to comprise the club beginning of the round. That goes on to say, when a club is damaged to the extent that the grip, shaft or club head has to be changed, this change exceeds what is meant by repair and such action constitutes uh, replacement and is only permitted if the club was unfit for play. So obviously, for example, if a player breaks a shaft, we're going to say that is unfit for play, which means he is allowed to replace the club. So it's just an interesting wrinkle. It means if you replace the shaft, uh, grip or club head, that that's considered to be not repairing. It's considered to be replacing the club, which means you can only do it if the club was truly unfit for play. Let's see. Then under four dash four A, uh, four dash four A slash nine, clarification of match play penalty is a useful one just to spend some time with, to get comfortable with, uh, dealing with the adjustment penalty in match play. Uh, that it's something that we don't, you don't apply that often. That's, as we just talked about, it's different from the loss of hole penalty and just walks through some examples of how you apply it. We debate whatever the status of the match is after that hole, you're just one or two holes worse. We bait, whatever the status of the match is after that hole, you're just one or two holes worse off, uh, whatever that is. Let's see. And then we'll close with, uh, Ken, Ken's Cause for Joy, decision four dash four C slash one. That previously, and for many, many years, this was, uh, arguably the least liked decision in the book. Because it, and the, and the answer just confirmed what the rule itself said, but it was not a, uh, is not a popular outcome. And now it's been changed. Shortly before the start of the round, player discovers he has fifteen clubs. He declares one out of play. Uh, is he subject to penalty? Answer used to be yes, uh, tough luck, get over it. Uh, now the answer is no. But it's a very qualified no. And look at all the qualifications to the answer. In these narrow circumstances, and all of these criteria have to be met in order for this decision to apply. I, the discovery was made shortly before the round. Emphasis on shortly. The player had fifteen clubs, so not sixteen, not seventeen, only fifteen. Having the extra club was inadvertent. And the player declared one of the clubs out of play. For the purpose of applying this rule, the player is not considered to be carrying, uh, the club or to have selected the club for play, even though it's physically in his possession. So now there would be, uh, no penalty. So, you like that, Ken?
Well, I think it would save a lot of lost club.
No, I, it's, one, one thing that's interesting is this happened, or this decision is, like I said, is not, has not been a popular one, but you know, whether at tournaments or just in your own play, how many people have actually come across this situation happening? Have you seen it happen? Player gets to his first tee and it rises, he has fifteen clubs.
Well, yeah, you go to the, you go to the, right. You go to the practice area with fifteen or sixteen. Fifteen clubs. And you say, before I tee off, I'm going to go to the coat shop. I'm going to go to the bag room and drop off a club.
Okay.
But you forget and you don't do it. That happens. And so then what do you do? You leave it someplace and you forget to pick it up or somebody else did. And the club is lost. So I think it's a good change because it's practical. I mean, makes sense.
But because, yeah, I do see it. You started the round with that club on the floor of your cart and on the seventh hole, you could.
Uh, well. If you, you, if, yeah, if you, if you.
Club, you know, so is it, you know.
Yeah, if you use it, I think you're just in breach of four dash four A. Because I don't think four dash four C applies.
So if you have it on the seventh hole, I don't think it would apply on seven and, uh, one and two.
Well, but you see, I don't think you can really turn, it's an interesting question, you see, but I don't think we can refer to rule four dash four C. Because rule four dash four C refers only to clubs that were in breach of the rule. You know, meaning that the players incurred a penalty. So if the player hasn't incurred a penalty yet, even though he has declared it out of play, I don't think we can say that four dash four C applies.
If you play the club that's on the floor of your cart on the seventh hole, it's really not any different than taking, by mistake, taking the club out of your fellow competitor's bag, which is on the cart with you and using it.
Yeah, that, that's the way I, I would tend to look at it too, Ken. Um, that, that you've just made a stroke with the club, you're not allowed to make a stroke with.
So if you still kind of be on the seventh hole?
That, that's what, that's, that's what I would think.
I just want to be prepared for the next tee.
I'm just kidding, relax.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
As long as they, as long as they changed it, why didn't they put it in the spot that it should be with the four dash four A?
Oh, why didn't they change the, relocate the decision?
Yeah.
Uh, I couldn't answer that. But I, I think that's a, I, I, I do think that that would be a helpful point because I, I think, you know, it's easy to point. You could argue that, well, since it's located under four dash four C, that makes you think that, well, if the player uses that club, he declared out of play, that four dash four C applies. And strictly speaking, I don't think rule four dash four C applies to this case because the way that rule starts, any club or clubs carried or used in breach of this rule, blah, blah, blah. Well, there hasn't been a breach yet, you know, so that's, that's at least, at least my opinion. All right. Well, anything else on, uh, rule four? All right. If not, let's see, Bill, we're going to meet next Thursday. Is that right? Uh, from same, uh, place, eight to twelve o'clock and we'll pick up with, uh, with rule five. And, uh, thanks very much. And for those of you who join us online, please let us know anything we can do to, uh, improve, uh, improve this.
I have a question. Are we going to go one through thirty-four?
Yeah, we're, we're. Yeah, we're, we're not going to teach in the order of the PGA, USGA class in part because I'm not bright enough to keep track of that. All right. Well, thank, thank you all very much.